Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of March 8, 2016. Roll call.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here. I'd like to thank the garden club. Do we have, I can't see. Yeah. For the floral arrangement they always provide for our meetings. And Connie Jackson, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of announcements this evening. The first one is the annual Pancake Breakfast and Easter Egg Hunt will be held on March 19, 2016, 9 to 11 a.m. at San Bruno City Park. The Easter Egg Hunt begins promptly at 11 a.m. The city of San Bruno will soon welcome Sister City Student Exchange delegation from Narita, Japan. The delegation will arrive in San Bruno on March 17, St. Patrick's Day, 2016, and will be in town through March 22, 2016. And there's a number of events you'll probably see the kids at and the delegation also. The city appreciates the volunteer efforts of the Beautification Task Force to clean and improve the appearance of San Mateo Avenue in downtown San Bruno. And Irene, could you just mention when you meet down there and what kind of help you'd like to have?
Thank you. I'm pleased to say that for the last six months that the Beautification Task Force members meet at San Bruno, San Mateo Avenue, we meet behind Centennial Plaza there. And I bring equipment and I send the people out and they clean up San Mateo Avenue. They pull the weeds, they pick up cigarette butts, lots and lots of those, and generally pick up litter. We meet the last Sunday of every month unless it rains and at 10 o'clock. If people would like to join us, they're more than welcome. And I know some students at Parkside School need service hours and those hours qualify. So if you're interested, just come in, come there, we're there. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing.
Yep.
We're gearing up for Operation Clean Sweep, which is the first Saturday in May, which is May 7 this year, so I hope you join us. The information is online on the city's website. And we meet at 9 o'clock at San Bruno City Park at the pavilion. And we have breakfast there. We send people out to clean the city. They come back. We have a barbecue lunch and a gift, and we send everyone on their way. So it really helps to keep the city clean. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Presentations. We have a very special presentation this evening. These are some of the fun things we get to do up here. Tonight, we're going to present a proclamation recognizing Vincent Carmine Hetchum for his extraordinary and compassionate efforts to help other children in need. And I'd like to read this. Recognizing Vincent Carmine Hetchum for his extraordinary and compassionate efforts to help other children in need. Whereas at the age of five, Vincent Carmine Hetchum, a current student at El Cristal Elementary School, learned that there were children without shoes. And whereas Vincent appreciated everything that he had and wanted to donate shoes to children that needed shoes in lieu of receiving gifts for his own birthday. And whereas Vincent donated almost 90 pairs of new shoes, socks, and slippers to the children's receiving home, a foster care home for youth in San Mateo County. And whereas Vincent's compassion continued in 2014 when he donated 101 toiletry bags to children's receiving home. And in 2015, he donated chemo care kits to Kaiser Permanente's Pediatric Oncology Department in honor of Vincent's best friend's brother and fellow San Bruno Park School District student. Now therefore, I, Jim Ruane, the mayor of the city of San Bruno, am pleased to recognize Vincent Carmine Hetchum for his extraordinary and compassionate efforts to help other children in need. And on behalf of the San Bruno City Council and the entire San Bruno community, and to express our sincere appreciation for his compassion for others, his generosity, and his example to others. I would like Vincent to go to the podium and receive this from the vice mayor. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Say a couple of words? Vincent, congratulations. Now, that's fun.
Congratulations to the parents, too.
Yeah, the parents, too. Wonderful, wonderful. Review of the agenda, I would like to move, if there's no objection.
I just want to know, Vincent, what are you asking people to collect for you this year, 2016? Okay, when you know, would you let the city know? Okay, thank you.
And we'll be happy to pass it on. Thank you, Vincent. Review of the agenda, if there's no objection, I'd like to move item 11, which is the annual report of the Community Preparedness Committee, to right after item number eight, public hearings. Item six, approval of the minutes of the special council meeting of February 23 and regular council meeting of February 23, 2016, any errors, corrections, or omissions, seeing none to be approved as submitted. The consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. Any discussion or action on consent?
If there be no questions, I'll move to approve.
Second?
Motion is second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Item number eight, public hearings. There aren't any public hearings this evening. We'll go right to number 11, which is the, receive the annual report from the Community Preparedness Committee.
Honorable mayor, council members, as a staff liaison for the Community Preparedness Committee, it's certainly my honor here to introduce them tonight. Before I do that, I just want to thank each and every one of them for their assistance and leadership they've shown and the assistance they've given me in emergency preparedness. And I certainly look forward to helping them on their goals for this upcoming year that you're about to see. So I want to introduce our members. George Paponas is our chair, Deana Gunning, our vice chair, Ron Lepetus, who's going to do the presentation tonight, Mond Mugia, and Matt Lathene. Welcome. Ron?
Beautiful. Okay. Mr. Mayor, council members, and all of our city staff with whom this city would not be as successful as it is, and it truly is one of the best cities in the peninsula. Absolutely true. I wanted to present our community preparedness report this year. So the mission statement of the Preparedness Committee is that we promote emergency preparedness, planning, and education to prepare our residents to mitigate the potential consequences of natural and human-made disasters. We've definitely seen a human-made disaster in the city, and living on the earthquake faults, a natural disaster is really only a question of when and not if. The members in 2015 were George Paponas, who was our chair, Mond Mugia, our vice chair, Deana Gunning, Ron Lepetus, of course, myself, and Matt Lathene is new to us in 2016, and we look for good things from him. Our city council liaison last year was our esteemed mayor, Jim Ruane. And this year for 2016, we have Ms. Irene O'Connell as our liaison to the city. Our city liaisons, first of all, you met, of course, Dave Cresta, who is our fire battalion chief for the city, and you met him. As well, David Downing is our deputy fire chief. And sitting with us on Tuesday nights at our meetings is Troy Frey, a police lieutenant in our police department. Our other members are Brian Mulver from the county of San Mateo, who sits in Redwood City, is the Office of Emergency Services Coordinator, and Walter Long, or Walt Long, who is the, who runs the radio club here, the amateur radio club, which is very active. So what did we do in 2015? Well, we did a whole heck of a lot, and I'm really proud to be able to relate that to you. The staff, city staff was trained on the new SMC Alert system, which is based on Everbridge software. It's a much more robust system than the older system. And we do encourage all of our residents of San Bruno to sign up for the SMC Alert system. We now have a new website for the community emergency response teams, which is being run by Samaritime. We are continuing to promote continuity in the city and to our community through being in the Posey Parade, the annual Posey Parade. We had the Fire Engine there last year. San Mateo County Preparedness Day, which happens every year. And we participated as well in an event that was sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, as well as an event that was sponsored by Walmart, one of the larger employers in the city of San Bruno. So here's a picture of two of our folks sitting at the 11th Annual Disaster Preparedness Day. For anybody in the audience who does not know this, this Disaster Preparedness Day is the opening day of the San Mateo County Fair. And what's really cool is besides learning how to protect yourself and save your family from disasters, you also get free admission to the first day of the fair. It's a bonus all the way around. There's no way you can say no to attending Preparedness Day every year. The CERT training continues, community emergency response teams training is continuing. And rather than reading these to you, the presentation will be available, so I'll skip this and just go right into some photos, because those are much more exciting than reading a whole bunch of words. Those are our community emergency response team trainings. We do live fire exercises, what we call live fire exercises, where we actually do things as they would be done in an emergency situation, such as preparing to get people out of buildings, put out fires, and stabilize buildings, et cetera. So CERT training is very, very interesting and a fun thing to do, and also it's good for the soul as well. CERT participated in the Silver Dragon Drill, and I'll get more into that in just a moment. We also are working on collaboration with the Neighborhood Watch Groups, which is run by the Crime Prevention Committee, and we're using those teams to expand our CERT. We have continued emergency prep messages in both English and Spanish on our cable TV station. We are collaborating with the San Bruno Park District, the school district, and we have gotten a lot of literature from our federal government, from FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, which we have distributed to our community members. Let me pause for just a moment and see if there's any questions before I get into Silver Dragon.
Anything?
May I recognize that question?
We answered two of the three I got. Are you going to have continuing?
Excuse me for just a moment, please. Do we need this gentleman to speak?
Yes.
In the microphone?
Yes, please.
Sir?
Pardon me. Malcolm Robinson, I had CERT training this year. Are you going to have continuous training for, a continuous education for CERT members?
Thank you for the question, and at this time, that is something we absolutely want to do. Right now, our resources are stretched trying to get members through the initial training, and we do not yet have the luxury of continuous education. Certainly FEMA would like us to be doing continuous education, and that is a stretch goal for us in the future. Okay. So the Shelter Creek Emergency Response, St. Shelter Creek is one of our larger apartment communities within San Bruno here. And they and the fire department participated in the San Mateo County Health Department annual exercise, which was in April of this year. They distributed 1,000 bags to Shelter Creek residents, and those bags that went on doorknobs were actually a simulation of doing welfare checks and the possibility of delivering medications if there was a pandemic declared within San Mateo County. That was Silver Dragon Four. That was last year. There will be a Silver Dragon this year as well, along with a Golden Dragon. And here's a photo of the preparation for Silver Dragon and part of the Shelter Creek team that participated in Silver Dragon. SMC Alert, this is the system that is used to send voice messages, SMS, or text messages and such to people that are within the county and within the city of San Bruno. This is used for emergency notifications such as shelter in place, evacuations, or other important information such as, oh, I don't know, DUI checkpoints, for example, so you know where they are. Seriously, it has been used for that in the past. Currently, there are about 1,000 San Bruno resident subscribers, but there are around 2,000 subscribers in the county of San Mateo that do subscribe to San Bruno alerts even though they do not live in San Bruno. And that could very well be because they work in San Bruno. In terms of the radio volunteers, we have moved the meetings back to the San Bruno Emergency Operations Center, which is in City Hall. They were, for a while, they were at the PG&E Center that was down on San Mateo Avenue, but they've moved back. We're seeing increased member attendance in the meetings and more interest, and we are doing a lot of collaboration with the Milbrae Club, specifically because Milbrae is our southern border. And if things could go south, they're going to be going south to Milbrae. You'll forgive the euphemism there. And we have developed new club bylaws. And here's just a few of our radio volunteers, the ones that wanted to be photographed. I'm a ham, you'll notice I'm in all the pictures. And with that, our 2016 goals. We want to start our outreach to the nonprofit schools that are in the, that are in the city. We're continuing to expand the CERT website and to keep our members engaged, which kind of goes back to the future training. Well, we can't do future training live fire, we can put future training on the website, and we can direct people to that website. We want to continue to collaborate with Neighborhood Watch, the crime prevention folks, to expand CERT. We're working on a series of "Did You Know?", which is a series on San Bruno Emergency Preparedness. So "Did you know we're doing this?" And "Did you know that we're doing that?" And "Did you know you can get into the San Mateo County Fair free on the first day by going to Prep Day?" Yes, I'm pushing that, I admit it. And then doing more online signup for the CERT courses as opposed to having to pick up the phone, because probably three-quarters of the folks that are working down at Walmart and YouTube who are millennials don't actually know how to use a phone. So by making online signups, make it much easier. And then, of course, we're signing people up for the new generation of SMC Alert, and we're working on a "Get Ready" campaign, which is coming from outside organizations. And that's what I've got, so I'm open for questions.
Any questions?
Irene? What is the lower age limit for CERT training? How young can you be?
Dave, do you have the answer to that?
Yeah, there's actually a curriculum for adolescents that we're evaluating, but we're pretty flexible, as long as, you know, they can sit and commit to the time where we've taken kids in their adolescence, in their early teens.
Okay, great.
Yeah. And then, if I can just add another, on the follow-up training the gentleman had, all our CERT members that go through our CERT program are always invited to come back to another class to repeat, to get classes that they may have missed. And Silver Dragon, we put out through our website, invitation to all people that have been trained in our CERT, if they would like to participate in the Silver Dragon exercise, they're more than welcome to come participate at Shelter Creek in April. So that's a, that's a training opportunity that we put out for all our CERT members.
And could, oh, could you tell people how long the training takes and, like, when is it? And...
It's six different evenings. Usually what we do CERT is CERT at night, it's one week, one night a week, for three hours, two and a half to three hours. And then there's a cumulative day, a skills day, usually on a Saturday. We're working to put, putting together a class for May. The reason we don't have an official date yet is that our interest has exceeded our capacity at the moment, so right now we're evaluating to see if we can have it in a bigger, find a bigger location where we can accommodate. Right now, we have an interest of 50 in our classroom. Now, houses about 18 to 20. So, but we don't, we try not to preclude anyone. If they can't make the entire commitment, you can certainly take a handful of the classes now and then, you know, pick up the classes at another time. You can piecemeal them through the different, our two, two classes a year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
What is the quickest way to sign up for SMC Alert?
The quickest way is to, you saw the link there, but simply, we ask all residents to just, you can just Google "SMC Alert." It's very easy to sign up for. You put in your information, you put in your address, you can put up to, I believe, five different addresses to get notifications throughout the, throughout the county. It could be your residence, it could be where you work, it could be where your mother works, your family works or lives. And it's the best way to get, to receive notifications as far as road closures, a disaster location of facilities and, and resources. So it's something that, the new format is much more user-friendly for us. It's, it's much more user-friendly for us to both put out messages and communicate with the public, so we encourage everyone to do that. Takes about two minutes.
Anything else? All right. Thank you very much. As I always say, when, when we have these reports, and these boards, commissions, and committees are the lifeblood of this city. It's all volunteer, lots of hours put in by lots of really dedicated people, so we really thank you for your efforts. And especially community preparedness, we are very sensitive to that in San Bruno, as you all know. We see how it works and have seen how it worked. So once again, thank you very, very much to all of the members of the Emergency Preparedness Group. Thank you very much.
Well, we thank you, and we thank city staff for your support. And as a final, the old address for SMC Alert used to be smcelert.gov, smcelert.gov. We have switched to a new system. I honestly do not know if we changed the URL, but you can always start at smcelert.gov to sign up. And I recommend heartily that everybody do that, along with visiting the Prep Day.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Right into item number nine, which is public comment on items not on this agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation into action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. I see we have quite a crowd here, and I would like you, if you haven't already, to fill out some speaker cards so that I can call you off one by one.
Speaker cards?
Yes.
I didn't know that.
Our first speaker, Tina Chen. Just tell us your name and your street. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tina Chen. I'm Secretary Treasurer of Unai Local Two. So I'm here today because today is International Women's Day. And I'm a immigrant, and I came from China. And I did a different job with the non-union company before I get a job at the Hilton Hotel, which is a union job. And as a former room cleaner, and I'm, I know so how hard, you know, the women's job in the hotel. So, and, and also I know so how important to have a union job for the immigrant too. So I compare the place I work with the non-union and with the union, and I know it's a good pay, good benefit with the union job, it's guarantee your family. And also, you know, the fair workload is important. The woman is not only one for earning money, bring home, and also they need to work at home to support their family and children. So, you know, fair workload is important, and for the woman who have after work to go home, able to take care of their family. And the most important one is kind of have a voice at working place. So that's the most important, the union job. And I'm here as you to honor women's worker by guarantee that worker at the causing this area have a right to be fair process to organize. And you will hear from the other woman tonight, and we urging you to take their story into account in your negotiation with OTO. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Angie Ortiz. Is Angie here? Okay. Molly Gomez?
Hi. My name is Molly Gomez, and I'm sick, sorry for the voice. I've worked in the restaurant business for over 40 years, and I currently work in a union job at SFO. And I want to tell you that there's a huge difference between union jobs for women and non-union jobs. I have worked in non-union restaurants. They require me to work the lunch shift and then come back for the dinner shift with no pay in between. Worse than that is the issue of sexual harassment in non-union restaurants. I worked at a primary restaurant called Gulliver's that required me to wear a costume and introduce myself as a serving wench. You can imagine what type of harassment that led to. I also worked in a restaurant in Foster City where the owner slash manager put his hand on me where it didn't belong. These were not strip clubs, these were nice restaurants. These were non-union restaurants. I'm speaking to you on International Women's Day to let you know that union jobs protect women from sexual harassment and other injustices in the workplace. Please consider this in your negotiations with the Crossings Hotel with OTO. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Annalyn Huerta.
Good evening, San Bruno City Council members. My name is Annalyn Huerta. I am eight years old and a third grader at Los Ritos Elementary. I am here with my mom and her friends tonight. Since today is International Women's Day, I wanted to support her and tell her how proud I am that she is my mom. She is not just my mom, she's my teacher and my best friend. She has encouraged me to join Girl Scouts, knowing that it will help me to be a leader, build confidence in character, and take action in my community by helping others. She became a Girl Scout troop leader so that she can make sure my troop was doing activities that helped us to develop skills that will last a lifetime. Tonight, my mom and her friends are here to show you that they care about this community and what happens here.
Thank you. Next is Priscilla Parasuerta.
Good evening, San Bruno City Council members. My name is Priscilla Parasuerta, and I'm here as a proud member of Local Two. You just heard from my daughter, Annalyn. I'm so pleased that she was brave enough to come and talk in front of you all. It's true that I've tried to raise her to be a confident young girl and know her importance. I haven't done this alone. I'm fortunate enough to have a partner in life, my husband and father to our two children. Being able to provide for our family is important, and we both work hard to do this. As a mom, I think about the future and possibilities, always visualizing the what-ifs of life. I'm confident that if I had to do it alone, I would be able to maintain our household and continue to care for my children financially and provide them with medical benefits. My union job pays well, provides medical, dental, and vision insurance. I have 10 paid holidays a year, including Mother's Day, ample sick time, paid vacation, and the stability and support of my union. This allows me to take time off, spend it with my family, nurture them, knowing that my job encourages me to cultivate these relationships. In fact, there was a time when my son was being bullied. I remember being at work when I got the call from the principal. Upon reaching the school, my son was visibly upset. He was in fetal position and not verbally responsive. It was very stressful for me, knowing that my son needed me and he was hurting, and my need to be there for him, yet knowing that I needed to work to provide for my family. But because the union contract includes PTO days, my employer let me use a few to go to the school, stay with him, observe him until he felt safe. This showed me the commitment of my union and my employer, that my family was important. I was able to take this time off, knowing my job was secure and there wouldn't be any repercussions. Having the protection of the union assures me that I never have to choose between my family and my job. This community needs to look to the future and ensure that my children and future generations can work, live, provide, and enjoy their lives by continuing to create jobs that benefit this community. I'm a proud Local Two union member.
Thank you. Next speaker is Beatrice Johnston.
Good evening, my city council members. I voted for you. My name is Beatrice Johnston, and I'm a longtime resident of San Bruno, Shelter Creek. When I heard that the city council was making a deal with an out-of-state company to bring low-wage jobs to San Bruno, I was really concerned. I really was. I know that the city calls itself a city with a heart, but where's the heart in creating minimum-wage jobs when a studio rents for $2,000 in San Bruno? Where's the heart in creating backbreaking work that housekeepers do if there's no health insurance to help them, to cover their, their medical expenses, the pain that they work with? And where's the heart in creating jobs for women without any seniority to protect them from sexual harassment by their managers? Where's the heart in that? Now, I choose to believe that you have a heart, but I wonder if what's missing is the will to do the right thing. And I think we should think about that. Thank you.
Thank you.[1738.97]
My name is Beatrice Johnston, and I'm a longtime resident of San Bruno, Shelter Creek. When I heard that the city council was making a deal with an out-of-state company to bring low-wage jobs to San Bruno, I was really concerned. I really was. I know that the city calls itself a city with a heart, but where's the heart in creating minimum wage jobs when a studio rents for $2,000 in San Bruno? Where's the heart in creating backbreaking work that housekeepers do if there's no health insurance to help them, to cover their medical expenses, the pain that they work with? And where's the heart in creating jobs for women without any seniority to protect them from sexual harassment by their managers? Where's the heart in that? Now, I choose to believe that you have a heart, but I wonder if what's missing is the will to do the right thing. And I think we should think about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be translating for Carol.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Carol Calvo.
Hello, good night. My name is Carol Calvo.
I've lived in San Bruno for cinco años y trabajé en un hotel Fairfield Mary que quedé en Milver por cuatro años.
I've lived in San Bruno for the past five years, and I've worked at the Fairfield Mary at Milver for four years.
El trabajo era muy duro y cuando yo empecé a trabajar ganábamos el mínimo de 850 y después de dos años nos subieron a 950.
When I started working at this hotel, we were making a minimum of 850, and after two years, they only increased to 950 an hour.
Muchas veces no nos alcanzaba el dinero para la renta y tenía que usar todo mi paycheck.
Many times, this wasn't enough for us to afford living here, so we would have to use, I would have to use my entire paycheck.
Limpiamos dieciséis cuartos, no teníamos beneficios, no vacaciones, no días de enfermedad y no pensión.
We used to clean sixteen rooms a day. We had no benefits, no vacation, no sick days, no pensions.
Teníamos miedo de hablar sobre nuestros derechos. Por esa razón tuve que dejar mi trabajo y conseguir un mejor trabajo en comisión.
We were always afraid to talk about our rights and speak about our rights, and for this reason, I had to leave this job and try to find a better job, and I found a union job.
Sin miedo a que nos, sin miedo a que nos hagan, sin miedo a que nos den cuando quieran. Las mujeres de San Bruno y nuestra comunidad merece tener un mejor trabajo y dignos. Estamos aquí para pedirles que hagan lo correcto.
The women of San Bruno and our community deserve to have good jobs. For this reason, we're here to ask you to do the right thing.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Candy. I work at a hotel as a housekeeper. I want to tell you a little bit about what housekeeping looks like. Every day, I clean thirteen to fourteen rooms. I make more than twenty baths and change over more than sixty puros. I clean the hall room and the bathroom. The hardest part of my job is cleaning the glass showers. In order to clean the glass shower properly, I have to scrape two doors up and down, on both sides, which means about eight tons per shower. So I feel pain all over my shoulder, down to my back. I used to work at a hotel that made me clean thirteen checkout rooms every day. A checkout room mean that the guests stay for a day or couple of days and leave a lot of garbage and mess. Checkout rooms are really hot and take a long time. I have to rush and finish all the jobs. After clean thirteen rooms, I would go home exhausted, and I have to take a nap before I could make a dinner for my family. Working at a strong union hotel have make a different, huge difference in my life. At my hotel now, I never clean more than ten checkout room in a day, usually less than that. This mean I go home with my family have energy and feel happy to stay with my family. The union makes sure my job is fair and doesn't hurt my body. I'm sharing my story tonight to urge you do the right thing for housekeeper at the Crossing Hotel, so they can have protection same I have it. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to say two quick things. First of all, I'm not a union member. I work at St. Roberts. One thing I am very aware of is when some of us who are older in this room were growing up, it was often thought that a woman's job was a supplemental amount of money that went into her family. And obviously, in this day and age, that's not the case anymore. With many single women, with some single parents, people whose husbands may or may not make a sufficient salary, the women who are working obviously are necessary in terms of helping to support the family. The other thing I just want to say is all of you who live in San Bruno know what a wonderful place it is. I'm one of the newcomers. I've only, this is my third year living here, but it's my fourteenth or fifteenth year working here. And the people in this town are wonderful, so I would hope that if the hotel does come to pass, that people would get paid enough so that they could work here and also live here in this city that we all love so much. That's my hope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here today because I wanted to take the time to address the city council over the new development of the hotel that is coming to our town. I want to do let everyone know in the room that this is the most generous council. They do love San Bruno, and I appreciate them greatly. I do believe that they will make the right decision. With that being said, it's always hard to make a decision. It's always hard to put pressure on a new company or an individual who don't always want or see the light to do what is right. Living here in San Bruno is expensive, and we all know this. And having the backing and the support of a union can only enhance the vibrance of the city, because it becomes strong and become united. So I do employ that the city does back the union and ask this hotel that's coming to our community to give fair wages and consider living in San Bruno. And living in San Bruno is a wonderful thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bit of a different subject. My name's Jim Stansberry. I'm the executive director of Project Ninety, which supplies substance abuse treatment in the county, including all of the cities and the citizens thereof. With development, after thirty-something years, we're losing our facility. This has been in the process for the last period of time. We'll make adjustments, but part of it is my coming to the board is to make you first of all aware of that this will eliminate about one quarter of the substance abuse residential treatments. The present time, there's more people applying than at any time that I've been around, and that's forty-something years in doing this. People are dying waiting to get into substance abuse, those that are on our waiting list. So the situation is dire. Parts of what we'd like, or I'd like, is just, you know, your support. The county, it's one where the county takes care of it, and the county does as good a job as any county that I'm aware of. However, as has been mentioned, just the housing costs, the cost of property and the situation within the county has made it to where very likely, up until this point, in three or four months, there will be this lessening of services that are available. You know, it's not only critical for the people who are getting the services that, you know, over the period of years, I see all kinds of people who have made the adjustment and are now clean and sober, working, paying taxes. And it affects not only themselves, but their families and the next generation. We've been losing the war on substance abuse, and unless the elders are cured or assisted, then the new ones coming up are going to find themselves at risk. The reduction of whether it be drunk driving, domestic violence, homelessness is the effect of not taking care of the treatment. So what I would ask is that both that you be supportive of us, if you have any influence with the supervisors who I know are aware of the problem and are doing what they can. However, the machinery works slow. And, you know, at a very soon period, a very near period of time, that there will be less services. And all of the particularly larger cities, of which San Bruno is one, is continually having your citizens that are needing the assistance, and that's going to be reduced. Anyway, thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you. Mary Isensei? Hope I said that right.
Close enough. My name is Mary Isensei, and I've worked at the Hyatt Hotel in Burlingame for twenty-five years. I've also lived and raised my family here. Recently, my hotel closed for an $80 million renovation. With Local Two, I would not be standing here. My coworkers and I had the opportunity to go in and negotiate to continue our much-needed healthcare during this closure. That allowed me to continue much-needed medical treatment for my back. I believe the workers at the Crossing Hotel should have the same rights as myself and coworkers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Maria Flores, and I'm here as representing my kids, and I'm just asking you tonight, make the best decision. Having a job with a union, it means a lot. I can request a day off for my kids, field trip, delay, eliminating time for them for And three things for a union job is addition pay, health and welfare, vacation pay, and seniority. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a couple of speakers off-subject, but the last one on this particular subject
I need a little tutoring now and again. Good evening. My name is Shelley Kessler. I'm the head of the San Mateo Labor Council, representing one hundred and ten unions here in the county. Some of you know that I've been there over thirty years, and I've had the distinct honor and pleasure of representing working people all over this county. We're here tonight because it's International Working Women's Day, International Women's Day. And I'm here to help call on the council to uphold workers' rights and women's rights as you continue to negotiate a final deal for the Crossing Hotel site. Now, a little bit of history. From the Lowell Mill to the Triangle Shirtwaist Factory to Mother Jones, Norma Rae, women have led the struggle to ensure that workers are treated with dignity and respect. We stand on their shoulders. I would imagine most of you in this room have had a mother, so you know what it is to have someone who will help raise you and teach you and train you and work on your behalf to make sure you have a decent life. The majority of the people who will work at the hotel are not only women, but women of color, who without the benefit of a union, would only make as little as $18,000 a year and are vulnerable to the whims of management. You've heard a few examples this evening. But tonight, and going forward, you have an opportunity to do something about the Crossing Hotel that can provide for these women and their families. Today, we call on you to hold OTO development accountable, to guarantee the construction workers and hotel workers will have the right to a reasonable process to obtain fair wages in accounting with some of the highest costs of living in the nation, including a right to have a voice at work. Now, OTO has, in other environments, signed car check and neutrality, which all of you have heard from us about over the time of your tenure when you've come to the Labor Council, to talk about some of the issues that are important to working people. We think that OTO could do that here in San Bruno. Now, history also teaches us that everyone who deserves, who works an honest day deserves decent wages and benefits. It also is necessary to hold those that have wealth and power to be held accountable, to guarantee a fair share for those who have earned those wages and have earned the profits and the benefits for those corporations. Now, you may not know this, but I have a theme song. If you're lucky, I'll sing it for you. But probably not. Don't look at me like that, Meruane. I'm not going to do it. But the song came out of the Triangle Shirtwaist Factory fire in New York, where a hundred and forty-six women died, because their doors were locked, they couldn't get out, they jumped to their deaths or burned up in the factory. But that song says, "No more the drudge and idler tend that toil where one reposes, but a sharing of life's glories, bread and roses, bread and roses." Tonight and going forward, you have a chance to bake and grow those results. All of us deserve bread and roses, and I urge you to work on that behalf, to make sure that these people will have the benefits and the kind of life that they deserve. Thank you so much for your patience and your tolerance, and I hope going forward, you will take the admonitions from the people here in this room to heart. Thank you.
Malcolm Robinson.
I've enjoyed that. That was very good. The issues that that fire caused have not gone away. The apparel industry just keeps moving the jobs overseas.
Hey, speak right into that.
My name is Malcolm Robinson. I've lived twenty years now in Portola Highlands, seven years before that in Shelter Creek. I come to you today to ask the city council to take the lead to help residents of San Bruno stop the rash of burglaries that are going on in our city. It's getting out of hand. My house was burglarized on February 1st, and I was out of town at the time. I'm a recent retiree, so usually I'm around the house. And my wife came home, the shades were drawn, and she had to deal with the situation. The house was trashed, jewelry was stolen. We dodged a bullet, because burglars really don't know what to look for. They're nervous and just throwing things around the house, but we still lost about $8,000 worth of jewelry mostly. And it's not just our house. In the last month, since February 1st, four houses in our block, Merced and Lake, have been burglarized or attempted burglaries have occurred. West of 280, in this year alone, there have been fifteen burglaries up in the hills, so Portola Highlands and the neighborhoods around it, and fifty-nine burglaries in the last year. And it's not just San Bruno. Apparently, they're going up and down the 280 corridor, so South City. I see heads nodding. You've heard this. This is happening. What's happening to me, and we need to do something. We just can't sit on our laurels. About twelve years ago, my wife and I left for a weekend, and I left the garage door open. And for three days, from Friday to Sunday, but all our neighbors, you know, looked out for us, and nothing was stolen, nobody entered the house, as far as we know. But times have changed, obviously. They jimmy'd the door, they came in, and it's terrifying to my wife. She's really nervous. We've joined the Neighborhood Watch Group. We've met with the chief of police and Chief Barberie, and I'm trying to get statistics on this, to put together a flyer to build a Neighborhood Watch Group in our area. It's hard to do. We get a little flyer, but really, this is not what you do when you go door-to-door to your friends and neighborhoods, friends and neighbors, and try to get some action going, right? So this is just the beginning. There's a lot of other work to do to be able to get ready to go to people's doors and knock and say... knock and say, are you ready? There's a website called Next Door that you can sign up to that we have, and through that, we've come in contact with a lot of people in our neighborhood, and there's a lot of nervous people out there. So we're asking for the city, our neighborhood is asking for the city council to take this issue head-on, to illuminate it as an issue, to provide resources and statistics so we can understand how big of an issue it is, to post signs in our neighborhood for Neighborhood Watch, to see more of a police presence. I always thought it was a quiet, out-of-the-way, fog-shrouded hill up there, and I don't see police patrols very regularly. As I said, I'm retired. I ride my bicycle around the hillside, I hike, and I know neighbors, and I go to Water Aerobics in Pacifica and stuff, so I'm outside a lot. So I asked the city council to take this as a serious issue and to take some action to help protect us. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Rico?
I didn't write it out this time. Robert Rico, I'm your appointed representative on the mosquito board, and I wanted to thank the city for constantly running information on your webpage. There's been some concern about the pond at the old theater building. As I told City Manager Jackson, the mosquito district and the property owner have been working together. Even though there's water there, it is being treated, it is being inspected very often, and should there be a need to treat it more or treat it differently, short of the property owner pumping the water out and then it fills back up, the district is taking all the proper steps. And I just wanted to let the residents here and listening or viewing know that the district and the city and the property owner are all working together to minimize any concerns.
Thank you, Robert. Good. All right, anyone else under public comment? All right, and we do have a crowd here tonight, and I know you all really want to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you'd like to leave now, you're welcome to. We'll just take a quick break.
Thank you for your time and patience.
Thank you. Okay, we'll resume the city council meeting right now under conduct of business. We have four items. The first one is to adopt a resolution approving property owner notice and protest process for 2016-17 garbage rate increase proposed by Recology San Bruno.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. The city's franchise agreement with Recology San Bruno allows for an annual rate adjustment. A detailed rate analysis is prepared every two to three years, and an interim rate year analysis is done in the remaining years. We are currently in the detailed rate analysis year. The detailed rate analysis is based on Recology's audited financial statements for the fiscal year ending September 2015, and includes a comprehensive forecast of operating expenditures and estimated revenues as outlined in the franchise agreement. On February 1st, 2016, Recology San Bruno requested a detailed rate year adjustment in accordance with the franchise agreement with the city. The detailed rate calculation did include the estimated lower landfill costs that are anticipated as a result of switching disposal sites from the Hay Road landfill to the Ox Mountain landfill, and which was approved by the city council on January 26, 2016. This was a savings of approximately $122,000 and reduced the proposed rate adjustment from 3.66% to 1.82%. City staff vetted the proposed increase by verifying that all projections were in line with the franchise agreement, compared prior year numbers to Recology San Bruno's audited financial statements, and verified that calculations were correct. The proposed rate adjustment, as I mentioned earlier, is 1.82% and would be effective July 1st, 2016. Based on the proposed rate adjustment, charges for a 32-gallon residential toter will increase by 51 cents to $28.70. The item for the council tonight is the approval of moving forward with the 45-day property owner notice and protest process as defined by Proposition 218. No action on the proposed rate increases are being requested at this time. Public notices are anticipated to be mailed out on March 22nd, and approval of the proposed increase will be brought back to the council for a public hearing on May 10th, with the increase taking effect on July 1st. The general manager from Recology is here tonight, and we are both available to answer any questions.
Good. Any questions for staff?
I'm going to ask a question. And it's not against the increase, I understand that fully, but every year or every increase, there's a table of the cities, usually 20 cities or so, and showing the rates. And hopefully, it's apples, apples, apples. There are some rates that are considerably lower, and there are a few rates that are considerably higher. How would you respond, or how would the general manager respond to someone asking, well, how come San Mateo pays $8 less than us, and they're such a larger, a lot larger city? Or even a smaller city like Burlingame paying, you know, a lot less? So I'm just curious as to how that's been addressed in the past.
Sure. We provide the cities for comparison purposes, and we don't know exactly. Every city has a different, unique circumstances, so their rate calculations are, they do their rate calculations independently, each one, so they have different drivers. So, you know, they may have more commercial or less commercial rates. So we don't delve into their actual calculations, we just provide it for comparison purposes.
All right. Anything else?
Through the chair.
Marty?
The review that staff made, is that available to the public for review, or is that something that is not available?
The actual, so what we were provided from Recology, I would assume that that would be public, right? Let's check with our city attorney. So Recology provides us with the detail, and when I was vetting, it was more just ticking, so you probably wouldn't want to see that, but you might, would want to see their actual calculations. We'll check into that.
Yes, I was going to say, we'll check in with staff, and then Recology's possible that some of the information, for example, might be proprietary, might have to be redacted. So it's hard to say now without actually looking at it, but we'll check into that and get back to you about it.
Sure.
And their financial statements are public also, so those would be available.
Good. Anyone else? Any action?
Through the chair. I adopt the resolution.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 10B, receive the mid-year financial report as of December 31st, 2015, and adopt a resolution approving a mid-year amendment for the fiscal year 2015-16 budget.
And members of the council, the city's mid-year report is prepared in order to compare the first six months of the current year to the six months in the prior year. General fund revenues with 50% of the year complete, as you can see, the general fund revenues are lower than the prior year at 45% compared to 51% last year. Why are these revenues lower? The biggest drivers for this decrease are sales tax and business license revenues. We are also seeing significant increases in property tax and TOT. As you can see in the top column, property tax is up 6% compared to last year. That's about $245,000. And TOT, with only four months of revenue, is 7% higher than the previous year. However, we are seeing a decrease of $734,000 overall, and that's a 4% decrease. The reason for this, the biggest driver of this decrease is the sales tax triple flip. And I know it's kind of confusing, I just wanted to kind of go over it really quickly, and I will try not to bore you, just kind of go over the first flip. Now, you like my little monkeys down there, I wanted to show. The first flip was 0.2%, or 25% of the 1% local sales and use tax are shifted to the state to guarantee economic recovery bonds. The second flip was the revenue that was lost from the first flip is backfilled to local agencies with property tax that was designated for schools. And the third flip is the shortfalls to the school from the second flip is backfilled by the state general fund. So a little background, this was approved in March 2004 by voters, and it was to issue the $15 billion of bonds to close the state deficit. So we fast forward to, oh, and also just a reminder that when we started receiving the triple flip reimbursements, the very first reimbursements were only for nine months, so we were always a quarter behind. So when we're here in the unwind period, the bonds have been paid off, and as of January 1st, we're going to be receiving the full 1% local sales tax rate, which is very good for my department because it'll be a lot easier for us to do our budget projections. On January 2016, the county auditor dispersed one half of the triple flip payment, and that was only based on that lag quarter that I just mentioned. So that quarter that we didn't get, we're getting caught up now, so we only got half of that. So you can see the city received $206,000 compared to $900,000 in the prior year. And we will see, receive the other half in May, so it'll be another $206,000. And then the final trip will be in June, July, and it's estimated from our sales tax representative that we'll get an additional $1.2 million. So just because the sales tax looks like it's low, it's a timing difference and should even out. The other difference was the business tax, and this is something I had brought forward to the council in the first quarter, and it's down because a larger business is paying a little less, well, a lot less, down $499,000 compared to the prior year. And as I mentioned earlier, property tax and TOT are showing an increase, so I am recommending that we adjust the budget, reduce the business tax by $400,000, and increase property tax and TOT budget by 300 and 100,000. That does leave the $99,000 left in business licenses, but we have new businesses throughout the year, and so I'm hoping that that will take care of that deficit or lower amount and correct itself. Expenditures are on track, as you can see from the departments, most are actually under 50%, so we are at 49% now, which is really, really good. It shows that we are monitoring our budgets and staying within them and looking at our expenditures carefully. Moving to the enterprise funds, revenues are coming in, you know, pretty much on track. Stormwater is a little lower than what we had originally budgeted, and this is because we had a transfer in of $250,000 budgeted, but we haven't moved that money yet. So once we move, it'll be fine, or it'll be on budget. With the expenditures, they are below 50%, and this is because this is the first time that we've started including the CIP expenditures within the budget to show you the total amount that's actually budgeted. And so the CIP projects are in different stages of completion, so that causes it to look like the less is being spent. On the cable fund, as you can see, revenues are below 50% at 43%. And this is due to, the rate increase didn't take effect until September, and when we prepared the budget, we assumed it would be as of July 1st. Also, wanted to just bring forward that on February 9th, we did have a study session, and we came up with three items that we are slowly going to move forward to try to address that deficit, and one was to reduce the franchise fee paid to the general fund to what it should actually be. And then two is to propose a rate increase and bring that back to the council and before July 1st, to be effective as of July 1st, 2016. And to gradually reduce the equity transfers over the next four years by approximately And that concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Angie?
Through the chair.
Marty?
Can you briefly discuss, yeah, I'm looking at your attachment to under allocations and other revenue, and departmental revenues? Can you just give us a little bit of a flavor of what those actually are? I'm looking at your page one of the quarterly financial report.
52.
I'm sorry. Oh, there's one there, 52. 52 on staff report.
Okay.
Sorry.
And then?
The question is, what are the allocations and other revenues? For somebody that's not familiar with this, I don't see it broken down on the right where the other ones are, just to have an understanding of broadly what that is.
Sure. I'm trying to recall, and other revenues would be any type of miscellaneous revenue. Trying to think off the top of my head what's in there. There are several, actually, actually, let me see, I may have. So it's reimbursements, cost recovery, any type of, maybe like return check fees, recoveries, looks like reimbursements, things like that. So it's quite a few different items that are in that category.
And then how are the departmental revenues? Just for the public that maybe doesn't know, what would that be? Like examples, that permit fees and encroachment permits?
Correct.
And building permits and staff time?
So, yes, community development has their fees for building and planning. Engineering would have their same type of plans, fees, and then also, police and fire also have their own fees, so.
Anything else?
One other thing I think is important in our cable, that we are pursuing installing, or we are in the midst of installing fiber at Shelter Creek, exploring that. I just wondered if, that's a big thing.
Correct.
And I just wanted to make sure that gets an exclamation point?
Yeah.
Because a lot of people are waiting for that there at Shelter Creek and across San Bruno.
Yeah, and I think I mentioned in the staff report too?
Right.
That we are looking at lease financing, and we've got quotes, and I know that cable is working on the RFP for, to get that out.
Okay.
Anything else? Ken?
If there's nothing else, I'd like to adopt the resolution amending the mid-year, or approving the mid-year amendment.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 10C, adopt a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Eaton Pumps, sales and service for rehabilitation of the Corporation Yard well in an amount of $230,000, and authorizing a total construction budget with contingencies in the amount of $264,500, and appropriating $91,500 in water capital funds.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council. My name is Jim Birch, Deputy Director, Public Services, Maintenance and Operations Division. I'm here tonight to provide information for the resolution before you, which would authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Eaton Pump Sales and Service in the amount of $230,000 with a total construction budget with contingencies of $264,500. A little bit of background about our city water system. Our water supply comes from three different sources. Groundwaters produced by city wells, five wells we have. Wholesale waters also purchased from SFPUC, and we also buy retail water from North Coast County Water District. The city of San Bruno operates five groundwater wells that extract, filter, treat, and pump water into our water distribution system for use by our residents and our businesses. Of these five wells, three are currently active and two are inactive. The Commodore Well is in design in the pre-construction phase, and our Corporation Yard well became inactive recently in February due to mechanical system failures, which necessitated the resolution before you tonight. During 2015, the Corporation well, along with the three other active wells, produced 63% of our total water use in the city of San Bruno. 46% was supplied by SFPUC and another 1% by North Coast County Water. Due to the recent mechanical failure, rehabilitation of the Corporation well is now a priority, and is proposed to be completed by August 2016. Well rehab can take several different forms, depending on what's found during the process, and from a minor rehab to a major rehab, and that includes pulling the well, we have a submersible well and pump, I mean, a motor and pump that needs to be pulled out. It's about 525 feet deep. They video inspect the casing and check for any defects, and there's screens at different intervals down the casing for water to enter the well, and that's inspected. We inspect the biofouling, which is just organic matter that would build up, and depending on the condition of the casing and the condition of any kind of biofouling, it would then necessitate different types of cleaning, from a light cleaning to a different types of cleaning, from a light cleaning to a more heavy, more intensive cleaning. The pumps themselves and the motors themselves can be very expensive, and we would pull those out, and the contractor would inspect them and then give us some advice on whether we totally replace it, or we rebuild it, maybe just a bearing. So it's, there's all kinds of different things that can happen, but we anticipate with this well that we're gonna have to do some extensive work, and that's why we hope to get it done for a whole lot less than two sixty-four, five hundred, but we are, we're hoping for the best, but planning for a little bit more intensive work being done. Preventive well rehabilitation and scheduled inspection minimize the number of emergency repairs and service interruptions. As the well ages, groundwater production decreases as parts become less efficient, and also, a decrease in production means we just have to buy more water from SFPUC, which just raised the rates recently. Currently, the city does not have a well rehabilitation and repair contract and relied on contractors to make individual emergency repairs on an as-needed basis. Emergency repair costs have been approximately thirty thousand dollars in two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, twenty-five thousand dollars in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, and we haven't had any emergency repairs yet, till now. The proposed rehabilitation contract will provide the city with benefits of a contract with fixed rates and experienced and licensed contractor whose qualifications been pre-approved by the city, and an efficient process that minimizes staff time to request proposals and preparation of contracts for the work if we had an emergency situation. The resolution before you tonight will authorize the complete rehabilitation of the corp yard well, and this well last underwent a rehabilitation in two thousand and nine. The water master plan and best management practices recommends a ten-year cycle for the major well rehab, and a five-year cycle to do an inspection and maybe a light rehab, maybe you can repair the motor, but at least inspect it every five years. To address the ongoing need for well rehabilitation, staff will be presenting to council for your consideration a comprehensive well rehab program consisting of a schedule, scope, estimated costs for all of our wells as part of the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen budget process. In compliance with the state and city purchasing regulations, in January, a request for proposals was issued. It was also posted on the city's website and advertised San Mateo newspaper, San Mateo Daily Journal. Two contractors attended the mandatory pre-proposal site visit, and the city received one formal proposal. To determine the contract award, the city reviewed the submitted proposal based on qualifications, references, the ability to complete work as requested, and the fairness of the labor, equipment, and rates that were provided. After reviewing the proposal and checking references, the proposal from Eaton Pumps of Woodland, California, demonstrated that they met all of the requirements outlined in the request for proposals. They're a certified and fully licensed water facility repair contractor, they have a history of completing similar projects with a consistent level of service, and their rates are pretty reasonable. Their previous work experience includes work for San Jose Water Company, Santa Clara, the city of Woodland, and we've also had extensive experience with them as well, the city of San Bruno. Eaton Pumps and Sales have previously provided well repair services for the city of San Bruno, and I know they did the one in two thousand and nine, they did a minor repair a couple of years ago on one of our wells, and we're really pleased with their responsiveness, even though they're in Woodland, they're pretty responsive, they do a lot of work on the peninsula, so we're, they're consistent with their work as well. The project work for the corp yard is anticipated to be completed by August, two thousand and sixteen. There will be no public impact during the construction of the facilities as is located within the city's corporation yard, and the water that will be out, we can supplement from our other wells and/or, depending on the demand, in that time of the year, we'll have to purchase water from SFPUC. The proposed cost, like I said, we're hoping that it will be a fairly, not as invasive of repair as we hope, I mean, as we might anticipate. Sometimes the casing might have some work that needs to get done, and that's where it gets expensive. This well was videotaped a few years ago, and there was none of that, so we anticipate that that will still be the case. We anticipate that the cost won't exceed two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, we have a construction contingency of thirty-four thousand, five hundred, is included for unforeseen items, like I discussed. The project will be funded with a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars remaining in the well rehab CIP budget, and ninety-one thousand, five hundred dollars of initial, additional water capital fund appropriations. Staff is recommending that the council adopt a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Eaton Pumps and Sales for rehabilitation of the corporation yard well in amount of two hundred and thirty thousand, authorizing a total construction with contingencies in the amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred dollars, and appropriating ninety-one thousand, five hundred dollars in water capital funds. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Your action by the council? Ken?
So, this is to just totally take it apart and check it out, you know, total overhaul?
Correct.
Okay. And then you're gonna be coming back and wanting to propose this same program with the other four wells?
Correct.
Three wells at least, that are operating now.
The well rehabilitation's been in the CIP for a while, and we're gonna come back to council and explain exactly the different components, much like I've done tonight, but which well would be what year and those kinds of things.
So if this, I mean, if this well didn't have any problems, it would be a ten-year routine?
Actually, we had planned for it to be rehabilitated next year, and we moved it up in the schedule, obviously, because it's having an issue, so.
Okay. Well, it's an investment we made, and we need to take care of it, so.
Anything else?
No other questions?
Any other question?
I don't have a question, but I appreciate the added detail, so we have a really good picture of what's happening and what we're paying for. Thank you. So with that, I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rueng.
Aye. Item ten D, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Bartle Wells Associates to conduct a water and wastewater rate study in an amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars.
Good evening, Honorable Mayors and Members of the City Council. The city provides water and wastewater services for all San Bruno residents and businesses which are solely funded by rate payers for all operating capital expenditures. In two thousand and twelve, the city council approved the schedule of utility rates for five fiscal years, and these rates will be expired in July, two thousand and seventeen. The city has an aggressive infrastructure replacement program planned, and evaluation of the water wastewater rates are required in order to determine the revenue needed to cover the design and construction of the planned capital improvement projects in the work plan and operating costs. The rate study will allow the city to evaluate the rates and determine whether the priorities set forth in the capital improvement program can be financially achieved. By proceeding with the rate study now, it will allow the city enough time to review the evaluation and bring the information to the council prior to expiration of the current five-year model. In April, two thousand and fifteen, staff submitted a rate study request for proposals and published it on the city's website. Staff received three proposals, one from Bartle Wells Associates, the other from Revitalis Financial Consultants and NBS. The cost proposals range from forty-five thousand dollars to a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Based on review of the submitted proposals, staff determined the project team from Bartle Wells Associates to be most qualified to provide a comprehensive analysis of the existing water and wastewater rates. Bartle Wells provided the financial analysis for the previous rate study in two thousand and twelve, and is familiar with the city's operation and financial structure. The firm also conducted similar studies for nearby cities such as San Carlos, San Mateo, and West Side. The base scope of work includes collecting data for operating capital budgets and customer water consumption data, developing a ten-year water and sewer financial plans to establish forecasts and projections to analyze potential rate models and alternatives, developing several rate adjustment alternatives, taking into account various financial and capital improvement alternatives for city council consideration, and presenting the findings to the city council and city council subcommittee, and preparing the draft and final report. And the costs of Bartle Wells proposes not to exceed forty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars, however, staff is proposing to include ten thousand dollars in contingency for optional services. At the city's discretion, the city may request Bartle Wells to perform additional analysis or other services outside the base scope of work, or use fund for additional meetings and presentations. Bartle Wells will not use this contingency unless additional scope of work outside the base scope is requested and authorized by the city. And staff anticipates that the rate study will be completed by August, two thousand and sixteen, and the amount, the cost to cover the rate study is included in this city fiscal year, two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, operating budget with funding of forty thousand from each of the water and wastewater funds, and the contract cost will be split evenly between these two funds. With that, we'll be, have to take any questions.
Any questions for staff? Action?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember, I mean, Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rueng.
Aye. Item eleven, we already had item eleven, item twelve comments from council members? Anyone?
I have one.
Marty?
Today's my third month here on the council, and it's quite different than when I was out in the public. I see four hard-working council members, and I know we don't agree on everything, but as I said during my commentary, or after my oath of office, I said that somehow, we're gonna work together to improve San Bruno for everyone. Changes in government are slow, they're slow by design. It's frustrating at times, because I'm sure everybody wants things to happen a little quicker, but there are rules, there's something called the Brown Act that prohibits discussion among more than one council member. I can only talk to one of the four up here without getting a violation of that law. So, it's difficult, it's a slow process. But that said, there's also items that are on closed agenda, or a closed city council, where we cannot speak outside of those chambers to anyone. And it's very frustrating, and I know the public wants to hear about what's going on, but we're legally not allowed to do so. I also wanted to express that I'm on Facebook, I'm on Nextdoor dot com, I see the comments, and a lot of times what I'm hearing is, or what I'm reading is that the public is saying the council's not listening. Okay, Facebook is great, also, Nextdoor is great, but the best way to get ahold of a council member is to send an email or give us a phone call. And my phone number is six five zero, five eight zero, three four four five, the rest of the council members, numbers are on the city website. So, some of us are looking at that, but again, if we start commenting on the website, we can get in trouble, okay? With that said, there are numerous boards and commissions that if you're interested in helping out, attend one of those meetings, figure it out. And with that said, I'd like to request a study session to review the lower sewer lateral, the transfer of the responsibility from the city to the property owner. I believe there's room there for further discussion, and I would like to formally request that to be brought up at a city council meeting soon.
Anyone else under comments? Okay, item thirteen is a closed session, we had one before the meeting, and we're going to go into a second closed session in a moment, and that's to conference real property negotiators pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight, property parcel numbers zero two zero zero one three two five zero, and zero two zero zero one three two six zero. The agency negotiator is the city manager, the negotiating parties are the city of San Bruno and OTO Development LLC, and under negotiations, the price in terms of payment. Also, in this special closed session, we have a public comment, if someone would like to address the council and public comment, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned, we'll go into closed session.